Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors' May 7th meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we'll start with roll call.
SuRiser Brandal.
Here.
SuRiser Mendez.
Here.
SuRiser Pacheco.
Here.
SuRiser Quintero.
Here.
Chairman Magzik.
And I'm here.
All present, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and this is going to be led by District 4. Barry Mendez.
Okay. It's my pleasure to welcome Pastor Brad Tweedy, who is the lead pastor at the Hills Church in Selma. The Hills Church was formerly known as the Selma First Baptist Church and is the newest campus for the Clovis Hills Community Church. Pastor Tweedy was born and raised in the Central Valley. He has served as pastor at churches in Dos Palos, Rancho Cucamonga, and has been the Hills Selma since September of 2023. Welcome Pastor. Please lead us.
It's an honor to be here today, to be able to pray with you guys and pray for you and for our county. So join me in a moment of prayer. Father, thank you so much for a beautiful day. Lord, we come before you, and I want to lift up the County Board of Supervisors. Give them wisdom as they face challenges and issues that our citizens deal with. And so give them great compassion as they serve our citizens, Lord. And we ask for blessing on them, their families, as they do a good work for us and for our county, Lord. So I pray that today is a productive time to gather, and our county is better because of moments like this, Lord. So please bless them in a great way. It's in Jesus's name. Amen. Join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, approve agenda.
Board members, any modifications to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously.
We now move to item number two, approve a consent agenda, items numbers 18 through 44.
Any board members wishing to pull or comment on the consent agenda? Anyone in the public wishing to poll a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Carries unanimously.
We now move to item number three, under Board of SuRisers', presentation retirement plaque to Brian Lehman, Sheriff's Department, 22 years of service.
At this time, I'd like to invite the Sheriff's Department to come forward for a brief presentation.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Deputy Brian Lehman. He began his career at the Fresno County Sheriff's Office in 2002, where he was assigned to work in the courts as a deputy sheriff. He later ran out to patrol, where he spent most of his time working in Area 4. In 2009, he was assigned as a property detective in Area 4, where he was responsible for investigating robbery and burglary crimes. In 2011, Brian received a Congressional Award for heroism. In 2014, he went back to the courts, where he worked until retirement. During his time in courts, he was a member of the judicial protection team for six years, where he was responsible for providing protective details and security for judicial staff, dignitaries, and investigating judicial threats. He was also responsible for designing the JPT team's logo. He was also a court training officer and a report writing instructor, where he trained countless deputies during their training after getting hired. Deputy Lehman will certainly be missed by everyone he's worked with, but we're excited to see where retirement takes him. We'd like to thank him for his dedicated years of service, for the citizens of Fresno County, and for the Sheriff's Office. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say to everybody here and to the Board of Supervisors, thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve the citizens of Fresno County. Everybody goes through different stages in life, and it has been my honor to serve for 20-plus years the citizens of Fresno County and especially in the rural areas of Area 4, in the Squaw Valley, Dunlap, Meramone, Pinehurst areas. And also wanted to thank the chairman for his support through the retirement process. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Brian. And do you have any friends or family you would like to come forward with you? Because we have some things we want to give to you and we want to get a picture with you. And if you have family that's here, we'd love to hear who they are.
Yeah, I have two friends with me. My best friend and retiree from the Clovis Police Department, Joshua Kirk. And then his wife, Maria. They're here. But that's it. That's just the three of us.
So Joshua's your best friend?
Yep.
I might have to question that a little bit. I went on a ride along with him once. I think we confiscated a tricycle from a drug dealer or something like that. Strange time. So if you wouldn't mind, why don't you all come forward? We have some things for you, and congratulations on your retirement.
We now move to item number four, under Board of SuRisers', presentation retirement plaque to Michael Downing, Department of Internal Services, 27 years of service.
And I think we have some representatives here from the Internal Service Department who will be making this presentation.
Good morning, Chair, Board Members. Sherry Walden, Assistant Director for Internal Services. I'm here to introduce Mike Downing, who is retiring after 27 years with the county in our Fleet Division. Since 2018, he has been our heavy-duty mechanic supervisor, overseeing the work on county vehicles such as tractors, loaders, and snow blowers. Here to tell you more about him is his division manager, Ken Christensen.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Ken Christensen, Internal Services, Fleet Services Division Manager. It's a pleasure to be here today. I am here to celebrate the honor of Mike Downing's 27-plus years of service with the County of Fresno Fleet Services. Mike started in the county in December of 1996 as a heavy-duty mechanic. As a team member of the heavy-duty team for a period of 20-plus years, he performed approximately 41,000 hours of work on a multitude of equipment, such as 10-wheeler dump trucks and stuff, a lot of stuff that supports public works. Next step for Mike began in February of 2016, where Mike was promoted to a supervising master mechanic position. With his years of experience as a heavy-duty mechanic and his drive to improve Fleet Services operations led him to be proactive in preventive maintenance schedules and supports parts ordering process to improvements to reduce downtime. Even though he was not hands-on, he was still getting his hands dirty in guiding and directing this team of mechanics on how to do a job more efficiently. He has been a key asset, as a link between staff and myself, of being performance-driven, identifying and developing guidance. Further developing his career, Mike promoted to Fleet Services Supervisor in May of 2018. Mike's vast knowledge of operations of Fleet led him to now supervise Fleet's heavy-duty shop, the welding and fabrication shop, and now the parts department. In his new role, he aided in the procurement of over 600 new and replacement equipment, where the specifications of each needed to be reviewed and modified and to keep the HD, heavy-duty fleet operating safely and compliant. During his time at Fleet, he procured a lean mean asphalt chewing machine, a big yellow cat, we call it, which to the date is the largest purchase of one piece of equipment known to the county upward of $850,000. Also known as a coal planter used to have a lead by public works. On a personal note, Mike came to Fleet Services with a passion for making things better, share his knowledge, and reduce his need for speed between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and to share his knowledge and his illness of racing, which I also share, because both of us know, or all of us know, there's no behavioral health clinics for that kind of illness. Mike has a passion for speed and competition, which led him on a path of motocross racing in his early years, for some time where he did this, but well, due to some accidents. And a new family, he decided to move to sprint car racing. Not really any safer, but now there's four wheels instead of two. During his sprint car career, he did very well, finished in the top three or won almost every race he was in. He continues racing, but no longer drives, but coaches his son. And this continues to be a family passion. I truly enjoy his stories. Mike would share stories about family, which consists of his wife through kids and a new grandbaby. His passion for working on performance engines out of his garage at home and his racing career. Mike has shared that he will continue to work on engines and sand toys during his retirement, while keeping an eye on his family. But I believe he will be busier now, taking orders from his adorable new boss, grandbaby Emma. In closing, I'm thankful for my time with him. It's been a pleasure having Mike as part of the Fresno County family. I wish him the best in his new adventures. He definitely will be missed on a personal and professional level. Thank you, Mike, for everything.
Would you like to say a few words?
Good morning. First of all, I want to thank Ken and Sherry for those kind words. I was actually kind of blown away by that. But really what I wanted to say is, I want to really thank the citizens of the County of Fresno for all the opportunities that were bestowed to me. I can't thank them enough for what they've done for my family. This has been an excellent place to work. It even got a lot better when Ken came along. He's, far as I'm concerned, he's the best Fleet manager that we've ever had. The place runs like a clock, and I couldn't be prouder and happier to work with this man right here. So in closing, I just want to say thank you, and it's been fun. I know I'm leaving a little early, as far as age goes, but as you said, I've got more work at home than I probably did at work. But thank you very much.
Board members. Anyone have anything they'd like to add?
Thanks for the 27 years. Appreciate it.
So sprint cars, 360 or 410?
Both.
Oh, really?
Wing and non-wing.
And when was the last time that you were in a sprint car racing?
2003 is the last time that I drove.
I have a friend, Bob Ebel, who used to work on sprint cars, and a great guy. He built some stuff for me. So please come forward. We have some gifts for you, and we really thank you for being part of the county family.
We now move to item number five, under Chairman Magzik, proclaim May 2024 as Older Americans Month, powered by connection Fresno County.
I think we have Sonia Bougat coming forward. And I have to tell you, when Steve Brandau heard that we were going to celebrate older Americans like him, he was so excited. And so since we've got a few people who are a little bit older up here, we're really interested in this resolution. The floor is yours.
I'm not going to repeat that, but I understand. Sonia Bougat, Department of Social Services. And with me are members of Social Services staff, as well as partners from Valley Caregivers and Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging. And we want to thank your board for acknowledging contributions of older Americans. This year, the theme is Powered by Connections. And it really encourages active aging through volunteerism and community involvement in support of opportunities for both recognizing the contribution of older Americans, but really providing services to them. Our department provides them, and across the county. There's many departments that serve older Americans and see the contributions of older Americans. One that I want to highlight is our in-home supportive services program. Actually, about more than half of the population, we serve our older Americans, and just over 10% are over 85 years old. Our oldest client is 108. But also, our IHSS providers are also, who serve this population, about 18% are over 65. So we both provide services and support those who provide services to older Americans. I want to acknowledge Valley Caregivers and Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging's representatives, who also want to share with you a little bit about this proclamation.
Good morning. Thank you. Hillary Bennett, Program Director for the Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging. Thank you Supervisor Brandau for being on our governing board. On behalf of, I'm here on behalf of Executive Director Jamie Sharma. I'd like to thank the Fresno County Board of Supervisors for this proclamation and recognizing Older Americans Month. We are honored to be here. FM AAA promotes senior nutrition by delivering healthy meals to homes and senior congregant sites. Right now, we have 18 sites open in Fresno Madera County. We offer in-home care to protect older adults and avoid displacement. We collaborate with various agencies to provide free legal support and other services to support the elderly community. And as the theme of 2024, Older Americans Month Powered by Connections, I'm a firm believer in supporting the whole person. We, as willing and able-bodied persons, must support the basic physical and safety needs of older adults without judgment. Thank you again.
Good morning. I'm Michelle DeBudio, Executive Director of Valley Caregiver Resource Center. And we're thankful also to the Fresno County Board of Supervisors for recognizing Older Americans Month and for including us in this important event. All of us here today work to foster a sense of belonging, to help older adults feel more connected, valued, and supported in their communities. Building a sense of community can offer a protective factor against feelings of loneliness, depression, and hopelessness, which are high-risk factors for suicide among older adults. In California, the age group with the highest suicide rate is currently those over the age of 65. Thank you for recognizing, proclaiming May as Older Americans Month. We remain committed to meeting the needs of our seniors and family caregivers and build a community where older adults are valued, respected, and empowered to thrive, championing their rights, dignity, and will be in for years to come. Thank you again.
Thank you. And I failed to introduce the whole team. So we also have Susana Rodriguez, who is from Valley Caregivers, and members of DSS theme, Orelli Agomes, who is our Deputy over Adult Services, and Angie, who is, Angie Silva, I want to use your old last name, who is a manager of our adult protective services programs, and Elsa, who is our Manager over In-Home Supportive Services. Thank you for this recognition.
Thank you. Board members, have any comments?
Yeah, I will. First of all, I'd like to thank Director Bougat for bringing the team together today, coalition of partners that help us oversee a lot of these great things for older members of our community, Chairman. And then for the couple that are from the FM AAA, my friends there that I serve with. I just want our board, this is a great time for me to say that I enjoy going to those meetings because we don't get into insane arguments that never lead to stuff. Most of the time, we work on very specific, small issues to move the ball forward. And I've really grown to appreciate everything that FM AAA does to improve the lives of the elderly in our community. And I just wanted to say that I think that Fresno County has a couple of vacancies that we could put on FM AAA. So if any of you gentlemen or any members of the public are interested in offering somebody up to serve or serving yourself, we'd like to bring you on board. But thank you very much for coming today.
Any other comments?
Yeah, please. Thanks for picking on him instead of me and Sal.
You're welcome. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, and I'll make a motion for approval of this proclamation. We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Carries unanimously. Please step forward and receive your proclamation, and we'll get a picture with you.
We now move to items six and seven. We will take them jointly, under Chairman Magzik and SuRiser Brandal. Item six, proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Matters Month in Fresno County. And item seven, proclaim April 29th through May 5th, 2024 as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Week and May 2024 as Maternal Mental Health Matters Month in Fresno County.
And Susan, I know that you're here to kind of lead the way with some comments. So please have your team join you. And we look forward to hearing about the importance of mental health awareness and all that your department continues to do here in Fresno County.
Thank you so much. Susan Holt, Director of Behavioral Health and Public Guardian. Thank you Chairman Magzik and Supervisor Brandau for these items on our agenda. As you noted, very important to focus on mental health in our community. We do that all day long, 24/7, 365 a year. But it's really awesome to have us here in Mental Health Month and Maternal Mental Health Month to really focus in for the community, to talk about mental health and open up the conversations in settings and forums where that might not be the daily jam, right? We want to normalize the conversation, and so that's what we're here to do. I'd like to introduce to you today Dr. Amy Parks, the Executive Director of NAMI, to say a few words and introduce her team. And then to talk about mental health awareness, we have Dr. Ado Boating from California Health Collaborative, who's having a little bit of laryngitis and asked me to speak on her behalf. And I'll talk a little bit about that after Dr. Parks.
Thank you so much for having us here today. As Susan said, I think every month is Mental Health Awareness Month for us. This is our work. This is our passion. We are driven by that passion. You can't have health without mental health. I can give you lots of cliched quotes that I love. But mental health is just as important as physical health, and I say that every single day. You can't have one without the other. NAMI was founded by parents back in the 70s who didn't know where to go to get help and support for their adult children living with schizophrenia. My grandmother was one of those people in San Diego, who my uncle lived with schizophrenia. And back then, if, I'm going to try to keep this short. But back then, parents were blamed, particularly mothers, were blamed for their children's mental illness. And that wasn't right. We knew that then. We absolutely know that now. But they needed help. They needed support. And that's where NAMI came in. NAMI continues to support family members and individuals who live with mental illness every single day. As you can imagine, it can feel really isolating and alone to live with a mental illness, but then also to care for someone who lives with a mental illness. And so that's where NAMI comes in. We bring everybody together. We give everybody a place to not feel alone, to feel connected, to get support, and some education. Thank you again for having us, for making this Mental Health Awareness Month. I want to introduce my team real quick, because I can't do anything that I do without my team. They are really the driving force behind what we do every single day. This is Gordy Ochinaro Bermudez and Heather Hayford. And they really are NAMI Fresno. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. She's too humble to really toot her own horn. But on behalf of the department and our network of providers, we rely on NAMI Fresno for that support of the families and individuals in ways that we, as the service providers, can't do. With peers, people with lived experience, reaching out to those families, it really complements the work we do. And Dr. Parks has been a phenomenal partner. We're grateful for that relationship. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the Department of Behavioral Health team members. We are a large department, 750 some odd physicians. And we have a network of hundreds of contracted providers who do our work on our behalf every day. Without the administrative and clinical team members, we simply could not serve our community. They're the heartbeat of DBH. It's an honor to serve alongside them. And I want to just take a moment to appreciate the hard work they do every single day. With me today from the Department of Behavioral Health is Amma Barami, Division Manager, Brian Bishop, our Communications Lead, and Lori James, Clinical Supervisor. And she does the great work of our Perinatal Wellness Center program. Nice transition to talk about maternal mental health, if I do say so myself. So Lori's program focuses on pregnant women and their families, including the father of the child that's in the womb. Those moms have a variety of mental health conditions that potentially can impact not just the mom's mental health, but the development of that child. And we know that by addressing maternal mental health, we can affect the outcomes of health and wellness for the child and the children in that family for years to come. So they receive about 80 referrals a month from the community and help those moms and families to achieve stability and wellness as they address their mental health concerns. And so I'd also like to introduce, from California Health Collaborative, come alongside me if you will, Dr. Ado Boating, who has been a strong leader for many years in the maternal mental health space. We participate with her leadership in the Maternal Wellness Coalition, a group of numerous organizations across sectors who come together to address mental health in the mom's space. So I didn't say as many nice things as you would have, but I really appreciate her leadership, and she's also a NAMI board member. So on behalf of all of my colleagues and, most importantly, everyone we serve, thank you for the time and the recognition today.
And I see a few of your members wearing green, and we've got a green pin. What does green symbolize?
So lime green is the mental health awareness color. It's not a common color. A colleague in public health said, "I've been trying on Amazon to find a lime green shirt for May, and it's hard to come by." And that really is reflective of the work that we have ahead because we're really trying to normalize mental health. So I encourage you to normalize lime green in your wardrobe and show up and represent in the month of May. Mental Health Awareness Month has been around for 75 years. And so, all kidding aside, when we wear our lime green, we're working to open up the conversation around mental health.
Outstanding. And so if there was a pie that was representative of the month, it would be key lime pie.
Yes, sir.
I will have an extra slice of that because it's delicious. So with that, we have two proclamations. Are we able to kind of take one vote for both? I'm going to open up the public portion. Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on these proclamations? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion and entertain a motion for approval of both.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. I appreciate that. For starters, to the folks from NAMI, do you still do the NAMI walk? Is that still happening?
Yes, we just had it on Saturday. Yes.
I missed it.
That's okay. That's okay. Because we're going to do it.
How convenient, Supervisor Brandau.
Yes, we had almost, we had over 700 people come join us Saturday. So we'd love to have you out next week. We'll make sure, or, sorry. We don't want to do it again next week, but next year.
All right, let me know. I've done it a couple times. It's been a couple of years, but appreciate all that you do. And especially, it's kind of a two for today because both groups are here for mental illness issues in our community. groups are here for mental illness issues in our community. I just, on my way in, a guy that everybody on this board knows, that lives in Boise, Idaho, flew into Fresno last night. And he had a flight from Boise to Salt Lake City, Salt Lake City to Fresno. Both planes were delayed for somebody that had a mental health crisis. So he was like four hours getting late into Fresno. So it just highlights how many people in our society have these mental health issues going on and concerns and oftentimes go untreated. And so I just want to tell that little story. And I see, Susan, did you want to say something about that?
May I?
Yes.
I'll take this opportunity. You mentioned behavioral health crisis is becoming increasingly common. And Fresno County has a mobile crisis response program. We created a phone number that's super easy to remember, 600-6000. So if anyone you know in Fresno County is experiencing a mental health or a substance use disorder crisis, that number is answered 24 hours a day. We'll have a conversation with the person, see if we can resolve their crisis on the phone. And if we can't, and if we've determined it's safe to do so, we'll go out in person. We have a contractor provider who's working in tandem with us, and we'll go out anytime, day or night, anywhere in Fresno County to help that person through their crisis.
That's good to know. That's fantastic. I did want to highlight for the maternal mental health side of our conversation today. The notes that I have, and it's inside of our proclamation, I didn't want to read the whole proclamation, but about one in five women suffer from mental health disorders like postpartum depression, but only 15% of those get help. So this team here, everybody involved in mental health is trying to reach those people through education, information, let them know that it's, that it's normal to experience these things. And to come forward, come out of hiding and get some treatment, get some. So we really appreciate that. There's no stigma involved to mental health these days. So we really appreciate all the work that both groups are doing. And Mr. Chairman, I can't remember if you made a motion, but I'll-
Before we do motions, I think Sal has a comment, maybe Brian. Okay, after Sal, we'll make some motions.
Morning. Susan, used to be, you know, past years that mental health issues were more likely with adults, particularly with veterans coming back. It was a big issue. I remember in the 1960s, Vietnam and that type of thing. And even in going back to Korea, the war over there. But it was mostly adults. And now it seems to be trending more toward the youth. And I'm seeing school districts have some concerns with that. Is there a big shift in numbers as far as the age groups?
That's a wonderful question, Supervisor Quintero. And we see mental health conditions showing up across all demographics, all ages, including the infant mental health program that's part of our perinatal wellness program. And so it is increasing in numbers. And so there's a lot of different thoughts around that. One thought is, we've done a great job attacking stigma. And so people are more comfortable talking about symptoms they may have, whereas, you know, four or five decades ago, it wasn't talked about. I know in my own family, when three young girls in the 1940s had their mother disappear for weeks at a time, no one said what was happening. No one said why one sibling was going to go stay with Aunt Eleanor and someone else was going to stay with Aunt Ollie. They didn't know that my grandmother was in a psychiatric hospital. They literally didn't know where their mother went because of the stigma associated with it. It was swept under rugs. Now we talk about it. We still have work to do to address the stigma, but I think what we're seeing in the generations coming behind is that we have really worked to normalize conversations about mental health and wellness, including also talking about substance use. Today also is Fentanyl Awareness Day. And so we're opening up conversations about mental health, just like we would about heart conditions, asthma, et cetera. The other thing, just very briefly to say, is that we are seeing the second wave of the pandemic, if you will. Many of us in 2020, in my field, expected that we would see an avalanche of need for behavioral health services because of all of the actions that happened in 2020. And that's exactly what's happening, particularly for young people.
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion for approval of these proclamations.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that carries unanimously. Please step forward so we can get a picture. And we've got two proclamations for you.
Thank you again for hosting that event. And I'm glad to be here. Good to see you. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I see you all the time.
Thank you.
We now move to item number eight under Supervisor Brandow, proclaim May 2024 as National Historical Preservation Month in Fresno County.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of let the aisle clear out a little bit, and then I'll ask James Sponsler from the Historical Landmarks and Records Commission to come forward. All right, there he is. Good to see you, James. May is National Historic Preservation Month. It's the 51st anniversary of its creation. And there are hundreds of historic sites in Fresno County. Each one of our districts has their own. In my district, we've got historical Fig Garden with dozens, in dozens of locations there, the Pinedale and Japanese Detention Camp, and Fort Washington up along the river as well. So they're all scattered throughout the county. Matter of fact, the building that we're sitting in right now is federally registered. And so there's a lot of work done in the space of historic landmarks. And I've asked James to come today as we proclaim May 2024 Historic Preservation Month in Fresno County. I'd ask James to come talk a little bit about the work that they do and maybe highlight some of that stuff.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Brandow. And thank you to the supervisory board here to provide us this opportunity. As your Historical Landmarks and Records Commission, we have some unique responsibilities. So not only do we look after the story and the information that we need regarding the different buildings and different assets that we have within this county, but we also work along with your county clerk to do the records retention schedules. So as the records retentions come in for the different departments, they actually filter through our commission as well, prior to being brought to you. Some of our work that we've had this year is being able to work to do a lot of work currently in the Reedley area. We've noted several different sites. What's different about our commission compared to other commissions is that typically it's documenting the item and things like that, and providing the honorarium certificates for those that would like to have their property recognized. It's not a designation. It's not a, you know, there's not policies or rules that have to be followed with regards to their property. But it's just to recognize that, you know, this place matters. This place is important. It has significance to the fabric of the county of Fresno. You know, the word Fresno has actually been synonymous with this area for over 200 years. It was given to, it was provided as a name when Gabriel Moraga came over the mountains and actually first saw the valley. So Fresno is a name that has been here for a very long time. One of the unique things that we're actually doing right now is we're working with the National Park Service to recognize the location of the Butterfield Overland Mail Route. This was a mail route that was a precursor to the Pony Express that everybody kind of is aware of. But it came through the county starting in the Leighton area and ending in Fireball. So it's something that we're working with to kind of identify where that trail was so that we can provide that information to the National Park Service. It is important for us to recognize the historical aspects that we have because it's important for us to know where we come from and where we're headed. Because we all know that history is happening every day. So with that, thank you very much.
Right on, James. Thank you. So I don't know if you'd like to go out to the public, Mr. Chairman, but I'm ready to support a proclamation.
Yeah. So you'll make a motion, buddy. Are you okay seconding it and commenting?
Yeah.
All right. And buddy has some comments.
Yeah. You know, you're talking about that stage line. You know, it started in San Jose, ended up in Visalia. And sometimes we can get together. I can show you in a place in Fresno County where it actually was at one time.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah. Because I actually seen, I was, well, I'm not that old, but I'm old enough to see through a pasture at one time in the 60s where the, you could see the wagon ruts, where it actually went. And actually, the Harland family, you know, that has Harland Ranch, originally came to the area north of Riverdale in 1866. And they, they had a horse changing stable there for that line.
Fantastic. Yeah. No, it'd be great to get that information.
Yeah.
And yet preserving our history is critical. And Supervisor Mendez is definitely a wealth of knowledge. I'm going to go out to the public, and so is Supervisor Quintero. He is a historian as well. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, yeah, go ahead.
If somebody is interested to have you look at, at a place for historical designation or for historical purposes, do we just contact you or?
You can contact the commission, or actually you can contact the library with Sally Gomez with regards to that, because we're, our commission is run through them. So they can provide that. And then as, one final thing is just, obviously, we do have those records on file at the Heritage Center at the main library.
I just want to make a comment on one particular building downtown. It's right next to the Rowell Building where our District Attorney's Office is. There was no movie theater next door, and the church took it over and just went down. The, the north, the south side of that building, if you can look, it still says Liberty Theater on there. That can be preserved. However, the marquee that's on there used to say Hardee's Theater, and they've changed that. But I believe behind that is the old marquee that says Liberty Theater. I think it was just covered up when it became the Hardee's Theater. And I don't think any, from what I've read, not too much preservation was done because the church didn't notify anyone of the changes they were going to make inside and outside. So I don't, I don't know if that, if that, they can still salvage that, the old theater sign on the south side, as well as the marquee itself, what's behind, what's up there now. So, but keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that carries unanimously. Thank you. And if you want to come forward, we'll get a picture.
I'm not going to be the only one up here. Come on, Sally.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
We now move to item number nine under Supervisor Quintero, proclaim May 2024 as National Foster Care Month in Fresno County.
I'd like to invite Sanjay Bhagri and some of our staff members to come in and give us a little bit of background about National Foster Care Month.
I want to start by thanking you for recognizing May as a foster care, as a foster care month proclamation. With me is Deputy Director Dalvin Baker and one of our Division Chiefs in Child Welfare, Kathleen Miller, who is, who are also going to share with you a little bit about the proclamation today. But I want to start with is recognizing our staff, our child welfare staff, our foster care eligibility staff, and other county members and departments in behavioral health, public health, probation, and other departments that support kids in foster care. And also recognizing our community partners and our resource families who also all jointly contribute to supporting our kids in care. The support our children receive are critical. And during, during the time they're in foster care, the supports that they need are higher. So really appreciate your recognizing this month and appreciate our partners in being with us when it comes to providing services to our kids. And I'm going to hand it over to Dalvin to share a little bit with you about this proclamation.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. We are pleased to present this proclamation to the Board of Supervisors. Our department receives phone calls from the community when there is believed to be suspected child abuse and/or neglect. Our responsibility is to heal families and help them become whole again. There are instances when families only require support from our department to assist them in navigating difficult situations they may be encountering. This support may be voluntary or court involved while allowing children to remain with their parents. There are also instances when a family needs to reconcile the worries that brought them to the attention of our department and the dependency court. In these instances, the parent's children may need to be placed outside of their home while their parents participate in court ordered services to assist them in their healing process. To assist in this process, our department works with the community of supports to assist our families throughout their journey with our department. These supports include our internal DSS teams, our relative and mentor resource parents, our foster family agencies, our short-term residential therapeutic programs, our behavioral and public health partners, and any other members of the community that touch the lives of our families. As of April 2024, we currently have 1,725 children in out-of-home care or foster care. In the last year, our department has continued to move our Quality Parenting Initiative work forward. QPI is rooted in three principles: the prioritization of excellent parenting and meaningful relationships, the use of research, and putting those with lived experiences at the center of policy change. Over the last year, our department has continued to infuse the QPI principles in our work and policies. We recognize the importance resource parents have in the lives of children in foster care. We believe in the power of partnership between our department, our families, and resource parents. We continue to work together towards strengthening this relationship. Part of strengthening this relationship includes our participation in QPI Champions Training. This is a six-month training on QPI values, theory, and techniques. We are pleased to announce that over 40 internal and external partners have successfully graduated from the QPI Champions Training. Division Chief Kathleen Miller is one of our QPI Champions. Kathleen will share a little about her experience as a QPI Champion. Thank you.
I need the glasses. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I come before you today as a proud advocate and practitioner of the Quality Parenting Initiative principles, QPI, within Fresno County's child welfare system. Since 2022, I've had the privilege of serving as a QPI Champion, bearing witness to the transformative power of infusing QPI values into, into the daily operations of our department. At the heart of our commitment to QPI lies a profound understanding that the decisions we make regarding well-being and care of foster youth must extend beyond training. They must be infused with a deliberate and conscientious application of QPI values, guiding our actions towards the betterment of each child's journey. In collaboration with the diverse cohort of champions, including child welfare staff, mental health professionals, resource parents, birth parents, and most significantly, foster youth themselves, we've embarked on a journey to redefine transition processes for every child in our care. So every time we have a placement move, we're going to look to do a comprehensive transition plan for that child. Because we recognize that each placement transition, including reunification with parents and family, necessitates a comprehensive and holistic approach that prioritizes nurturing and maintenance of vital relationships. Understanding the inherent challenges children face during placement changes, such as behavioral regression and increased needs due to the stress of transition, we are diligently crafting an intentional process to ensure that every transition is purposeful and aligned with the child's pace whenever feasible. I'm proud to- I'm proud to announce that Fresno County is poised to become a trailblazer in our state by implementing a comprehensive transition policy. However, the true measure of success lies not merely in the establishment of policies, but in the adoption of a team-oriented, child-focused approach to mitigate stressors and prioritize the safety, stability, permanency, and well-being of our youth during times of change. Allow me to share two compelling examples of successful transition plans that underscore the importance of our endeavors. In one instance, we had a nine-year-old child, and despite him being in his foster home for about a year and a half, he had not established a permanent plan of adoption or legal guardianship. But through a month-long transition, we were able to seamlessly transition him into his forever home with the support, ongoing emotional connection with his former, former resource parent. Similarly, we had an 18-year-old youth, and he had developmental delays, mental health barriers, and physical impairments. And after four years of being in foster care, he successfully transitioned from an out-of-county placement back to Fresno County with his birth family. Through the collaborative efforts and a tailored transition plan, this youth continues to thrive while he receives essential services and he pursues his education. These are compelling narratives to, that not only underscore the importance of healthy transitions to meet the diverse needs of our youth, but also to show that we are working to help them flourish and establish permanency. In embracing QPI values, Fresno County maintains steadfast in our commitment to embody excellence in every facet of our practice. Thank you.
And Sanjay, I wanted to take this opportunity to, to thank you and your administrative team. There's been a lot of changes, sometimes difficult, in trying to implement new, new policies and programs at, in your department. And, but I've seen the, the good changes that, that has, that have resulted from that. Hasn't been easy, but I wanted to thank you and your team for ensuring that the, our foster youth are taken care of. The one thing that, that I see, that I noticed last year, I went to one of the presentations you folks did, was where you encouraged families that had foster children as well as those that were interested in adopting. You brought back a, a one-day, like a mini-conference for those parents that were interested in, in adopting foster children. And it was good to see that because the level of interest, the enthusiasm of the team in trying to get more folks to do that. The other part is that, that's been really good to see is as, as the foster children turn 18 and over, we're able to provide some housing for them as, as an individual adult. And I think we have some of those over at the new Arthur Apartments that we have over on Blackstone and Shields, right?
We do. Thank you for the acknowledgement. We have really worked jointly with a number of our partners to do, to start a number of new programs over the past two years. And really want to take this opportunity to also thank your board for the support in approving programs, adding positions, and really providing us with resources to do some of the good work that the team here and about 570 other staff in our department, along with a number of partners, have really worked very hard. We're starting to see a number of really good outcomes across the board for both our kids in care and for, and with our families. And I do want to say, we do have another one of those events, Let's Talk Conference, coming up, so we will share that. The number of resource parents and the relatives that are really stepping up to help us during the time the kids are in foster care has really increased significantly. We are now, we have more than doubled the number of kids that are with their kin during the time they're in foster care, which is really significant because the most important piece during the time they're away from home is maintaining relationships. And that's probably one of our proudest accomplishments, our partnership with resource parents and families. So thank you.
Thank you. And did you want to ask for comments?
And you look before I make a motion? One general comment. So one thing I want to congratulate the whole department. One of the things I've seen is just number of kids in our foster system has also fallen. I think a few years ago, we were at about 2,800, and I think we're at about 2,600, or maybe even less than that. But is that accurate?
So we have reduced entries into care by 33% over a two-year period. So we used to average about 115 kids entering here. We're in about 75 now. We have also exited kids and reunified families faster. So our number of kids in placement are 1,700. Overall, we work about with about 2,400 kids. But that also includes kids that are at home, either voluntary or court-involved. Our overall reduction with kids in care has been around 30%.
That's outstanding. Well done. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to proclaim May 2024 to be National Foster Care Month in Fresno County.
Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Please step forward and we'll get a picture with you.
We now move to item number 10. Under County Clerk, Registrar, Voters, Approve Amendment to the Sali Resolution Adding One Staff Analyst Position to the County Clerk Elections Org. 2850, effective May 13, 2024.
Good morning, Chairman Magzig and Supervisors. I'm James Koos, your Fresno County Clerk, Registrar of Voters. The item before you today is the addition of a staff analyst to our staff, increasing the total number of full-time equivalents within the department from 33 to 34. I'm available at this time to answer any questions that the board has.
Questions?
Yeah, Buddy, go ahead.
This person's main job will be to clean up the voter roll or work on it?
This main, the main position or main focus of this position will be voter role maintenance. So it'd be involved with voter registration, all aspects, but in particular, the interaction we have with the state vote count system and our processes to keep our roles in order.
A voter janitor.
You done?
Yeah.
So tell me, what is the difference between that and Buddy's question about voter role cleanup? So he asked, is this about cleaning up the voter role? And you didn't say yes, but you said it's about maintenance. So what, what's the difference?
There's a lot of things that go on with our voter registration system. Over the last 120 days, we have had 52,000 updates to our voter, our voters, adding or updating currently active voters. 68,000 changes that include inactivations or cancellations. So 70,000 roughly actual interactions in just 120 days there. Over the last year, 160,000. And some of those could be viewed as cleaning up or keeping it orderly, moving voters that now we are unsure their address to an inactive state and reaching out to them to get updates, moving them into the processes that were legally required to do by the federal government before we remove them from the registration. So there's a lot of steps there. Cleanup, it has a variety of connotations. Some of them are positive and some are negative. And I think we really need to focus on the whole of the voter registration role and how we help our voters come in and how we make sure that we keep that role orderly.
Okay, I like that, but the impetus of the board was about cleanup. So I want to make sure, James, what I would like to see, and maybe now that this person is hired, maybe you could communicate through the CAO, or if you want to set up a meeting with me, I'd like to see metrics on how we're going to accomplish that so that we can track it.
Absolutely, and that is one of the things that is going to be specific to this role, is that they're actually going to be able to bring in and do things that we've been able to do only on a, as possible, or when, when we had the extra hands available. Well, now we've got those extra hands permanently. So being able to put out metrics in an orderly fashion every year. How many changes are being made? How many updates? How many outreaches are we doing? How many people are removed from our roles? All of that information there. Other actions like special projects with the state system that we do, do on their outreach, we're not going to be able to do on our outreach. We're going to be able to go to them and say, hey, we want to be able to work on these persons that we have questionable information on. What can we do? So we can be more proactive now with this position.
All right. Supervisor Magzig and I both had a mutual friend on Facebook who messaged, who tagged us in a Facebook post, and they received three, three ballots. And so they want to know, you know, why is this happening? What can we do? So my response was, you know, oddly enough, there's sometimes weird but valid reasons why you would get more than one ballot. And so I said, private message me and I'll try to look into this, which they never did. And so, you know, so that doesn't surprise me either. So, but we do want to, as much as possible, be transparent with the community and try and fix some of these issues that keep, you know, keep people worried and guessing and, you know, a little concerned.
It is always our goal to be able to respond to the community and answer those questions when they come up and try to be ahead of those questions and not have them come up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the, I think, main reasons, even though it didn't, hasn't happened here. But, you know, voting is strictly at the county level. Although you do have the state DMV adding people to the rolls, you know, which you, you need maintenance, basically, because there's been places in the United States that, counties that ended up with more voters than statistically they should of people. Because it was actually less people than actually voters on the voting rolls of those ages. It never happened here. I'm just saying it's, it's happened in other places in the United States.
Yeah, we had, I get comments more from certain members, certain advocates, why aren't we reaching out to those folks that aren't registered in Fresno County? But, yeah, it's, we are constantly doing that here. And there is, our registration rules, I don't want to harp on this, but the state is the official holder of all registration data in California. Under federal law, every state is supposed to actually have a computerized system where they are the main holders, and then the counties act as an auditing process for that. So it's our job to get in there and both audit the incoming and the existing to try and make sure that we have as orderly a role as possible. And, yeah, we very much don't want to have
Right.
extra persons on there whenever we can legally go through the process and move them where they should be or remove them from our roles when they should not be on our roles anymore.
Good, good explanation. Thank you, James.
Couple of quick comments that I have. I recognize that our voter rolls are dynamic. So they are never the same day to day. They're constantly in flux and changing because people move, people die, people re-register to vote, and, and so there's a whole host of things which impact your, the voter rolls. One thing I would like this person to do, and I think we've talked a little bit about it, is during an election, if at some point we can take a snapshot, and I know what's challenging is you can do, you can register to vote, and I think vote the same day you're given a provisional ballot. And so if there's a way to kind of catalog voters who vote, you take snapshots in time just to make sure that the voter rolls on that given day match, you know, the people who are actually casting ballots. And then on Election Day, that creates its own set of challenges. But to the extent that on Election Day, another snapshot's taken and you're able to catalog people who register on that day and cast a provisional ballot and identify if the ballots actually counted or not, if, if they're verified going through your processes, just to try to tighten up as much as possible the systems that we have as we go back and we audit our elections. But ballots cast and voters who voted, finding a way to match that up a little bit better, I think, I'm, I'm very interested in that. One thing I will say, based upon my knowledge of county elections over the last 20 years, as I've gone back and looked at elections from 2008, you know, '09, '10, and where we are today, even though there is a lot of consternation out there about the processes that are being used, based upon information that I have seen, our elections are more accurate today with how we audit and account and the, the canvassing of the ballots that take place to verify that the machines are operating appropriately. They're tighter today than they were 10 or 15 years ago. So to me, there's always room for improvement. So I'm very interested in, in becoming as efficient as possible. So with this person who's coming on, if you feel that more resources are needed, I too, as Supervisor Brandal and the rest of us up here, are very interested to hear from you because we want to make sure that you're given the tools you need so we can make sure that we have credibility in the eyes of, of our, of our voters.
Thank you, and we, it has been one of my goals to really kind of push that through. I am a bit of a numbers guy, so when we get in there and take a look at that. As the chairman did mention there, and for the public in general, it is a moving target at all times. We have voting, we have ballots that come in 28 days. We send out ballots 29 days before an election. You can come in and vote 29 days before, but we always have ballots in 28 days before. So when we sit and talk about Election Day in California, it really is an election month. And those registration numbers, whether it be folks coming in or folks being moved out, yeah, it's a constant dance of information coming in and out. And so we are always looking to keep our numbers tight and clear and ready to present to the public.
Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item?
Good morning. My name is Tammy Richardson. And while I appreciate, while I appreciate the addition to this new position, I have a few questions for you all. And some of it's been addressed a little bit, but just want you to know my thoughts. How exactly will this position be working to clean the voter rolls versus what is being done now? So how is that person going to be an asset to, compared to what's happening now? Our voter roll system is broken. Fresno County is connected to the state system, which uses vote count, DMV registration, and outside agencies like Rock the Vote, Connect, UCLA, and NGOs. So will there be a reporting from the ROV to the board showing the effectiveness of this expenditure cleaning the voter rolls or maintaining the voter rolls? And does maintenance include checking for citizenship of voters? Last, in closing, the best way to see improvement to our voter rolls is to take back local control and get out of the Voters Choice Act. Thank you.
Hello, Sean Birdine, once again speaking on this issue. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for Mr. Koos coming down and presenting this. I do encourage the, the board to, you know, take on this extra position. It sounds like that seems to be the general sentiment. I, I do believe, you know, it would help. I, no slight to him or in his office. I just know they have a tremendous amount of work on their plate that they all have to tackle. So we know that, you know, having an extra set of hands and eyes can definitely help with that. Again, just tremendous amount of work that they have to do and tremendous amount of respect for it. But this position can really only treat the symptoms. The need for this position and its role is a direct response to the vote-by-mail system and everything that's kind of an outgrowth from that. It's the root problem, and while this position can help, it, it's really kind of limited in scope and all of the things that it can really address. And I don't want to diminish the work of, you know, anyone who does work in the office on this, but it cannot fix the potential issues that but it cannot fix the potential issues that happen through the post office that can happen in the drop boxes. These things have also been documented throughout the the country. It can increase, it cannot fix potential issues that happen in person. I have spent numerous, numerous, numerous hours watching these mistakes happen in person. This position can't fix all of those. It cannot increase the standards for signature verification. As I I brought up at the last time I I spoke, there really aren't California standards for that. And in turn, it means it can't really fully stop people signing on behalf of other people. And all of the various reasons that that may or may occur, you know, there's been documented cases of that. And as Supervisor Mendez pointed out too, there's been documented cases that show voter totals don't always match up. How does that happen? Well, largely because systems like vote by mail create all of these backdoors, weaknesses, vulnerabilities, and all these other problems. So again, this position can help. And I don't want to say that it won't help at all. It can. But we also have to understand that there's much, much broader, you know, topics at hand that need to be discussed, and there's only so much that this one can do. But I do want to thank the board for taking this matter seriously. I do believe that you are. I do believe that you you spend a tremendous amount of your time doing research on this, following this topic. It's ongoing. It's it's difficult to know exactly the right way to handle it. And I want to thank Mr. Kuss for everything that he does do, because he does a lot to reach out and talk to us in the community and and work with us, talk to us. So thank you very much for your time and have a good rest of the day.
I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board. We have a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously.
We now move to item number 11. An administrative officer received presentation on current proposed county facility capital projects and provide direction regarding priorities and next step.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, your chief operating officer. Today I'm joined with Mr. Stephen White, Mr. William Kettler from Public Works and Planning, and Mr. Brian Burton from Internal Services Department to provide you with an update on your current capital projects. We're also going to provide you an overview of the design build and design bid build process and an overview of capital projects that we have spooled up and kicking off very soon and to seek any input from your board on these items. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. William Kettler.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Department of Public Works and Planning is pleased to join your board this morning. Thank you, Ed, for the introduction. So we're going to give you a quick update on the current significant capital project that's still in process. And we're going to move into the couple of construction processes. So right now, we're still going to talk about the West Annex Jail. West Annex Jail is actually targeted to be completed this summer, but we're actually maybe done as early as the end of this month. There's three main outstanding issues that are being dealt with right now. One of them is highly technical, and we're working closely with the state fire marshal now at this time and have been for the last several months. They've been quite a bit more cooperative these last four months, and we're very appreciative of that. So we're still on budget, so we should be good there. So we might be done again by May 31st. If that changes, I will be advising the appropriate entities. Couple photos of the jail. These were, the outside photos were taken just a few days ago. You notice the landscaping is going in around it and all the facial work is done. It is, it has a T, the temporary occupancy permit to allow them to install equipment, which has been granted by the state fire marshal. And I want to make sure I hit the right button so I don't. Pod area, this is an illustration of a pod taken from a control area. So you got this, the detention cells around that area with the dining area. This is a medical unit here. This is one of the corridors of some of the holding cells. So it's about 99% completed at this point. It is late. We're well aware of that. There were challenges on multiple fronts with regard to that. We can discuss that when we get into the processes. So there's two primary processes that the county avails itself of. One is the traditional design bid build process, and the other's design build, which I'll talk about in a moment. While this chart talks about the primary steps, there's a lot of action that occurs between the contract portion, and that is primarily on design bill, bid build. You're looking at developing the plans in total by county staff and on-call consultants with engineers, et cetera, to get a construction set of drawings produced and permits issued before you go out to bid. Also, what has to occur is any land use permitting has to occur if the site requires a land use permit. There's a lot of time and and effort goes into this point before you get into the bid process and retain your designers and contractors for that. Those two entities then subcontract out. So obviously, the, there's, there's advantages to this, but this is subject to the lower, the lowest bidder. And in many cases, depending on the bid process that's been received, there could be a great many change orders, R F Is, et cetera. Requested R F Is, a request for information from the architect. In that case, if the contractor is not aware. So so that's, that's, that's the design bid build, which is traditionally utilized by the county. Process we've been introducing and are in process now for two of our projects, which is the Clovis Library and the Reedley Library, is a design build project delivery system. And that is, the owner, the county, has a process by which they go through a selection of the D B entity, the D B E. And that is basically, I won't call it a beauty contest, but it's similar to that. They apply for, through an R F Q, a request for qualification. They submit their qualifications. Based on that submittal, they're reduced down to a shortlist of those that will participate in the request for proposal, in which case project particulars are identified. They produce a proposal packet, which is then reviewed by a panel, both the R F Q responses and R F P are reviewed by a county panel, including the client department. Once the R F P entity is selected, it's recommended to the director, which is then brought to or for your board for contracting. So there's, while there's a good deal of effort to select the design build entity, the actual design falls to the design build entity selected. They're giving a scoping document which identifies what the client department needs. They put together a design which is then reviewed by county staff. The opportunity here is to have them identify what they can do to work for. We verify that against an established budget estimate for the project. And we negotiate with them there. We're picking the, in this case, the advantages. It's not the lowest bidder. It is the one entity that is selected, and there is opportunity to work with them on the costs related to the project. And since they are responsible for the project they present to the county, and what is it, whatever the ultimate project is selected, based on the needs of the client and the county, they are then responsible for any oversights. So there's no, there should be reduction in change orders and requests for information because the architect works closely with the contractor. They create a team approach there. So there's a great many advantages to that. And we're rolling that out with both the two, two library projects right now. So in this slide here, this identifies some of the advantages of design bid versus design bid build. Design bid is a, is a, a good choice to use, is an important choice to use when you have a complicated project that requires multitude of team members to be involved with your on a tight deadline, and if you have a stringent budget. So with every project, we establish an estimate which is fairly conservative to make sure we're covering unknowns, et cetera, but also covers county time, time needed to investigate the site, et cetera. That's why we run that through as a filter for anybody who responds to our design bids. A design build, pardon me. Design build, bid build, the traditional method, is if your project is publicly funded, which all of ours are, and if we have to go through a fair bidding process, which we do, but the state does allow design build, pardon me, so that's why we're moving to that in certain cases for the projects that fall within that first parameter. And if your project is fairly simple to construct. So, and most, most are, but some of us, for example, West Annex, institutional building like that was complicated. That was traditional method. We took the lowest bidder, and that's where we are. So project deliveries have very, very, varying forms of risk. Design bid build here, design build here. You can see the owner's risk, the contractor's risk. In design bid build, the owner's risk is least. We have, pardon me, we have some greatest there. The design bid, a design build, pardon me, contractor's risk is greater because they're taking on more of the responsibility when they prepare their package. There's a couple of other processes here that we haven't done. There's construction manager, construction management on a risk contract, and then a multiple partnership, multiple prime contracts, and then partnership arrangements here. So so if we talk about the significant projects, so at this time, I should note also that the department processes about 200, has processed about $200 million worth of capital projects, whether that be buildings, roads, bridges, et cetera. Those typically are delivered without incident, short of the the two primary projects that your board is aware of, the West Annex Jail and the Area 2 substation, which we had significant issues with contractors and et cetera. So right now, a capital projects unit of the Development Services Capital Projects Division has 30 projects in process. The only ones we'll cover here are the significant projects that are upcoming. One of the more significant projects is the Clovis Regional Library. This project will be approximately 26,400 square feet. It will be within the landmark commissary of of City of Clovis. This is a elevation that was revised and recently blessed by the City of Clovis, so we're grateful for that. The budgetary allocation for this project is $24 million. And we are anticipating completion, initiation of construction spring of '25 and completion in fall of '26. Next project is the Reedley Library, smaller library, 14,000 square feet. And I should note, the library construction materials are all to be durable. We're not using a lot of wood. We're using things like concrete, fatigue metal, et cetera, so that these will withstand weather. So that's an important point. Some of the older facilities we're dealing with right now, we're having to reskin certain libraries because they're, they're having issues. This will be allocation of 13 million. And it's a, again, 14,000 square foot. We've already issued, and I should note on the Clovis, we've already issued the R F Qs on both Clovis and Library in April. We're in the R F Q process right now, reviewing those, getting the responses, and then we'll be reviewing those shortly. Again, starting in spring on this and completion in summer of '26, spring '25, summer '26 for completion. Next project is kind of somewhat in its infancy. We've heard from the client department quite a bit. And this would, depending on the prioritization, this one would be one of the the next few projects to go out for R F Q. We are going to be doing design build on, designed bid on this project as well. This is approximately 68,000 square feet for a primary building, about 12,000 square feet for a storage building. This will be the Agricultural Commissioners Office and the U C Extension services will be working with them closely, which we coordinate with as a county quite often, the U C Extension. Estimated budget is to be determined price-wise, cost-wise, you could be looking at, you know, somewhere up in the 40s, but that hasn't been determined yet. So next project is is a design bid build. And this is the 5555 Olive. This is the old AT&amp;T building at Olive near Clovis Avenue, just west, a little bit west of Clovis Avenue. This is a 115,000 square foot tenant improvement. There's some complexities with this particular building based on, somewhat on neglect and somewhat on on some of the construction methodology that was used for the original building in the 80s. Budgetary allocation at this time is 35 million. This is right now. We've issued the R F Q out for, for the engineering firms to work with our architect to put together the drawings. And we're getting those responses shortly. So anticipate construction start date spring of '25. It should be done in early of '26. And the last project is 200 West Pontiac. This is a project that will have a design bid build process, pardon me. We're looking at going out for R F Q sometime later this month, in June possibly, as early as June. Allocation right now at 40 million. This is approximately, this is a little bit presently over 100,000 square feet, 103,000 and change, actually. There is a component possibility of modifying a warehouse into office space and probably having a second story in that. One issue on this building, since the site was recently acquired, it's now in county jurisdiction. It was in the City of Clovis's jurisdiction. This will require a site plan review prior to any work occurring on the site. That's something we could work into as we're going through the design bid project.
Will, if I could interrupt you for a moment, if you go back to the prior slide, I just want to make sure we're clear of who's going into this. So so for both of these, for the for the Olive building, we're talking about behavioral health. So this is some of our team on the U M C campus that will be moving into this one. And moving on to the Pontiac, that is our probation department, where they're moving out of leased facilities into a building that the county will own.
That concludes my portion. I'll turn it over to Ed.
Thank you. So for future capital project needs, my office or our office needs to work with the subcommittee to come back to your board for options and a recommendation for updates to office space and the chambers for your board. In addition to that, we need to evaluate and consider our downtown parking footprint. Do we maintain the status quo or do we expand that or enlarge that footprint moving forward? And then we're also working with Public Works and Planning on a scope of work and an R F P to bring in a consultant to create a master plan for the county for both short-term and long-term space needs. And then finally, we also are working on creating a deferred maintenance funding plan. As we take on more property of our own, we need to make sure that we fund the continued maintenance for it moving forward. Our goal is to return to your board in October with a status update. And before I conclude, I'd just like to take this opportunity to mention that in the last five years, the county has taken on, completed, and worked on more capital projects than we have in the last 25 years combined. And an important fact in that is we've done that without incurring any debt, and that's a testament to sound fiscal planning and wise use of one-time money by your board. So I thought it important to bring that up. That concludes our report, and we're available for any questions.
I'm sure our board members have some questions. We will start with Supervisor Brandow.
So, Ed, I don't know if you want to answer questions, pass it off to Brian, Will, Steve, Paul. I do have some different questions. For starters, we just got this really packet today. I think I got it today. Maybe it was available yet. So, I mean, you know, back when I was chair, and I know Supervisor Pacheco also talked about a lot this when he was chair, is that we're starting to fade again on getting things to us in the right amount of time. It puts pressure on the clerk. And it's crazy. And I ask, I've got asked by two community members about this packet, and I, I just had to look like a stoop. So I am, you know, that's just a start. But I would like to ask about a couple of these projects. Let's go to the AT&amp;T one. When did we purchase that? Does anybody know when we purchased that building?
Four years ago.
Four years ago. And so so tell me, because, you know, four years ago was not too far after I came on this board. No, why the, why four years of of letting it sit there versus doing something with it?
So part of that had to do with how we purchased the building. So we purchased that building from AT&amp;T directly. And AT&amp;T was still an occupant, and they continued to pay us rent in the building for a year and a half. After that, they've been in plans with the Department of Behavioral Health, with Public Works, on how they'll be reused, reutilized in the building.
Okay.
So that was part of it, is we recouped a portion of our purchase price from AT&amp;T as our tenants after we purchased.
All right. That's a legitimate answer. I didn't know that, and that's good to know. So it just wasn't sitting there vacant. AT&amp;T was still occupant and paying us rent, so we didn't lose a lot of money there. And how about the Pontiac project? I'm just looking at the ones that you guys provided. We just purchased that, what?
January 1st, 2024. Technically, January 2nd, because the first was a holiday.
All right. And that is the one that our probation department is going into, correct, Paul?
That's correct.
All right. Is it possible, Paul? So here's what I was kind of thinking, and then here's what I got. We're really highlighting about four properties or five properties today. And some of them are really almost, we, we've got a lot of information on the West Annex Jail. So it's, you know, that wasn't really, that was outside of our control why the delays happened there. And then the two libraries are the other ones highlighted. But is there a way that we can be given a list of all But is there a way that we can be given a list of all the properties in, in Fresno County? And just take a look at everything that we own?
The answer is yes. I mean, so i- if you're looking at county facilities that are, we own, I think you're, I assume you're focused more on buildings where we own something.
No, I, I'd like to know every.
Yep.
Every piece of land. I mean, this is, at some point, when you do an overview.
Yep.
Need to see all that stuff. I mean, these five or six properties, we've been actually talking a lot about them lately, the two libraries, the West Annex Jail, the substation. But I would like to know, you know, the other stuff available too. So I think the public would like to know, some of the members of the public that are in the game of partnering with the county and developing things that we need. So I'd like to get a complete list.
So we can absolutely supply that. We have supplied that through Public Records Act request previously. The county owns approximately 280 buildings. We keep inventory of every piece of property that the county owns, including, um, excess right-of-ways from prior, uh, road development. And so that, that number reaches a pretty high number, um, when you start to include every small patch that's out throughout the 6,000, uh, square miles of Fresno County.
Okay. Cause there's a cost, you know, there's a cost to owning a property that you're not doing anything with, right? You're not, when we're the county owning it, we don't pay property taxes anymore. We could sell it, let somebody pay property taxes. There's cost of maintenance. We've seen that really, really jam us up on the UMC campus, right? There's, there's a cost of maintenance, a cost of insurance. So I'd like to know, you know, kind of a bigger picture, what we're doing with a lot of that stuff. On the two libraries, um, and I'm going to let my colleagues talk here. I'm not trying to hog, I wish you would have started with somebody else, Nathan. On the two libraries, you've chosen design build. And as, as the process for how to accomplish that work. And so why did you choose that? And do you have full faith that that is the best approach to getting our libraries to the public?
That's a good question. Thank you. It's a process, since we're actually trying to link those two to get one entity to do both of them, which might, uh, result in some cost savings as well. But given the nature of the, and importance of the buildings, uh, by, by us, and, and I could, I should clarify on both of those structures, we actually did some preliminary work prior when we thought it was going to be designed bid build. So we have that, that we have to share with when we get to that point in the RFP period with the designed build entity. So we feel that selecting the contractor, the DB entity, I should say, through the selection process for those two structures, given that they're libraries with their importance is the, is the best approach, because it'll allow us to actually pick and choose rather than taking lowest bidder.
You know, I like, um, on your description page, Will, of the difference between design bid build and design build, it looks that, um, on these two options, this, this pathway, design bid build, excuse me. This pathway, design build, which we've chosen for the two libraries, allows us, in general, more often allows you to hit your timeline targets.
Yes.
Okay. That's very important to me, because I.
And we map out the schedule and we stick, we, we stick to that. So right now it's out for RFQ per the schedule, went out the day it was supposed to go out. And we're working with the entities, we can, we can modify that if they're running long or what have you. Once we get the team on board, that's when they run with it.
And then what happens in that scene where something's not delivered, a air conditioning system, or it rains, or the project's delayed? Who ends up paying for all of that delay?
Well, more burden is put on the DB entity for that. The county, of course, is generally very reasonable in those cases, because there are unforeseen things. But we do also work in contingencies and unforeseen items in our schedule. So we have, we actually work extra, a little bit of extra time, not a lot, but we, we try to do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just add, Supervisor Brandau, uh, with you and I, the chair being on the subcommittee, we have a little bit more knowledge regarding this, so it's good that the full board is updated. My one question would be to the Department of Public Works. They have done an excellent job in delivering the projects that we've had over the last several years. The animal shelter, to just name a, name a few. They've generally have been on time, on budget. Obviously, the jail is the exception to the rule, but as is stated, that was circumstances outside of our control. And for those that may not know, it's simply the state fire marshal that held up the project. I'm not afraid to say their name. And they have no one that they answer to and they completely can do what they want, when they want, and have seriously delayed our project. And it's good to hear now that they're more amenable and we can get that done. But my question to you, Director White, with all of this coming forward and we have ambitions for a new ag center, a parking structure and all that, um, do you have enough staff to keep these projects moving forward? Especially if we're going to enter this new phase where we're going to do more of the design work ourselves and not go out? Do you have the appropriate resources, uh, to keep moving these projects on and, and keeping them going on a timely fashion as Supervisor Brandau alluded to earlier?
One word, yes, we do. We just restructured our CM department division to incorporate our second RE inspector with a program tech, that we run lean, we run lean and run fast. And we just had a meeting with Paul and Ed earlier this week and I had one request. Give me a green to go, do not turn me off, we are going to go. Once we start, we're right in the middle of all of our ARPA projects right now. We're going to use JOC, we're going to use design build, we're going to use design bid build. And we have the resources necessary to do all that stuff. We're hiring, people are leaving us, but the machine works and it runs and will continue to run. Design build is easier process for us. The true first design build will be a hybrid with the one we're doing for Kurt's project over at Pontiac, because they just got to us today, first set of drawings themselves. We're going to join that with a scoping document, which is just a narrative form of telling you what you want, not a site plan, not a floor plan. And the true first design build will move, will this is project, uh, that we still have to cost out, still to see what the funding is going to come from, but we're ready, enabled and capable of doing these projects with the resources we have.
Okay. And again, you've done fantastic work. The DEA's office is another shining example. It was stumbling a little bit when you and your department got involved, it took off and, uh, we were able to complete that, that project. And as we do things, these will be 50-year buildings. When we build the new ag building, that will be there for the rest of our lifetimes and then some. So we want to make sure they're, they're done well. And to the greatest extent possible, that they're efficient and will stand the test of time, because they will be there for a very, very long time. So I don't mind going a little bit slower, but we want to get it right. We want to include people like the Farm Bureau, the NISI's Farmers League and all those kind of things, so that we design a building, uh, that everyone can be proud of and can utilize to the greatest extent possible.
Our department is just one of many. Paul's office, this board, county council, they all deserve the credit. Facilities, ISD, we're all part of a team of people to deliver projects. We're built to do this. Let us loose, please.
Okay. And another, again, I believe a high priority is, um, for our employees, uh, we need parking, uh, in downtown and we need to start moving that up to food chain so that we can address that concern. Cause I just don't believe there's adequate parking, uh, for the amount of people that we have downtown. And one of the biggest issues of downtown is parking. So if we could alleviate that for our employees, uh, I think that would be a great thing. That's a win-win. It's never attractive to build a parking garage and all that. But I think it's a very function, functional thing, um, that our employees would benefit greatly from. But again, Supervisor Maxi and I will keep moving those things forward in our committee, but we need to make that a priority of the board. Supervisor.
This is kind of a answer to Supervisor Brandau. You know, and doing public, you know, building for, been at this for over 30 years. And design build is, if you, the whole deal with design build, you get a good contractor and you get something built with not a lot of drama. I've seen in straight bid deals, I haven't seen it at the county, but I've seen it before, where the contractor actually staged a fight with a state inspector. It got so out of hand. You know, because a lot of times you get contractors in a straight bid, they'll come in and underbid it. And then you've got a war until that project's done, and then you're usually in court afterwards. So it's, it's, uh, it's a hell of a lot smoother and you get some really good projects done. I just wanted to state that.
And then one other thing, Mr. Chairman, too. It was mentioned, but I think it needs to be emphasized a little more. With all that's been done in the last five to seven years, no money was borrowed. And that's a pretty significant thing, especially on a public entity. Just think of all the major projects that were done, the substation, the DA building, the animal shelter, and on and on and on. And we did it all from within. Not one dollar was borrowed to complete that or bonded against. And that's a pretty significant deal. And hopefully we can continue to do that as we move forward.
Right. Unheard of.
Unheard of, that's right. Unheard of.
One quick question. What do you think the state fire marshal costs the county of Fresno on that project?
Well, I don't want to throw dollars to state fire marshal, because they're playing nice right now.
Yeah, until we get our certificate anyway, yeah.
Until we get that. We're really close. Probably in the hundreds of thousands. And it was, it's a culture. They're very knowledgeable of what they do, but when they changed staff multiple times, approved and disapproved, it was a challenge. But I'll tell you what, the, um, CM on the project, Bernard's tried to help us, but it was a lot of us working back and forth with facilities, going through the process, trying to find things to be done. But I don't ever kick a skunk, because it will spray you. And I don't want to say that right now, because we're that close. It's actually 99.999% done. And I don't want to give Brian Malicki a heart attack. We don't get this thing done here pretty quick. But we're, our goal is this month, done. And we're there, we're almost there. And then we're going to continue with Dan's office on some other things. But we're committed to Brian to make sure we can get it done.
Cause it's all about personnel over there, because they have to approve the designs and then another person comes in after it's built and said, you can't do it that way.
Correct.
And the idea is to have somebody that actually goes back, looks and.
And there were missteps on our designer's part. They put some luminaire on the, uh, stairways that got caught. There's no device that manages the luminaire. And we finally get them to back off of that. But they have now in the last probably four to six months, really worked with us to try and resolve it.
Right.
And our next challenge is our, our contractor. We're working with their process with them right now. We just want to be done with that project. You know, the sheriff needs the space, the sheriff needs the logistics and then the rest of the cascade just happens after that.
Thank you.
Have a few comments. So, um, as I think about the projects we've done and what we have coming up, we actually have more projects right now in the queue than I think we've had in the last really five years. At least, uh, in the, uh, the value of these projects is much more. Courthouse Park, I, I look at the whole park area. It's been identified as a location that needs a lot of money. I think if we don't do anything with, uh, our parking structure, just to fix that, the lid of the parking structure is $13 million. But, um, you know, I would really like to see some major improvements, maybe going up from there, adding parking spaces, putting a new building, uh, there on, on Courthouse Park. So to me, when I look at Courthouse Park alone, you know, we could easily spend over $100 million at this location in the near future. Area Two Substation, I know that we've had the ribbon cutting and it's done. A challenge we had there is, uh, that project took years longer than it should have. And I'm sure that we're involved with LDs.
Low bid.
With, uh, you know, well, yes, low bid. Part of it too is making sure that we hold that contractor's feet to the fire. And with liquidated damages, we can sting them a little bit. So I don't know what kind of LDs we're going to hit them with.
We are not looking to ask you for anything. We're going to say, here's the LDs working with Dan's office and it's going to hurt, it's going to hurt him bad, because he not only does that, did that to us, but he did to the city of Fresno. And just down the street, there's another product he's doing in the city of Fresno for a private entity. It's a challenge.
I know with, with our, our package, when we put them out to bid, making sure that, uh, liquidated damages are large enough where they sting really bad, where people don't want to delay a project, but not too large that people aren't going to bid. So I think moving forward with some of the, I think county council's office needs to work with us. We need to have liquidated damages that are a little bit larger than what we've had in projects in the past. A 200 Pontiac, I will remind, uh, remind you, and this is not your fault, but I know ISD, CAO's office, this board gave direction that as soon as we closed escrow, we wanted to be pretty quick, um, in remodeling. So that building didn't sit there very long. So it's actually gone too long, as far as I'm concerned. There needs to be better coordination, so there's no time, uh, that's missed. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we should have contractors in there right now remodeling that space. So the fact that that's not happening, um, bothers me a little bit. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And I know that we're set to put something maybe out to bid in June. That's my understanding. So that is good. With the Clovis, oh, if you want to talk about that a little bit.
At 200 West Pontiac, um, the initial plans of what they're remodeling the space has been completed. Contractors have completed that and that initial space is available for probation to move into right now.
Uh, my, my understanding is we're might, we're probably going to hold off on that, because we don't want, we don't want them in the way as we're doing, uh, a greater remodel job at that spot. Is that correct?
Yeah, so Brian, there's, there's a lot to this. And so I guess the main point, I'll say, number one, they've been busy this whole time. But number two, it was originally going to be in two phases. And so the first phase, uh, was going to be done, uh, with a JOC contractor under ISD and then the, the bigger phase with Public Works. And in talking with ISD and Public Works, it was deemed to be a more efficient process to bring those together into one design build process and to not have people in the building. And, uh, staff who are here will attest, I was also pushing to get them in the building, but realized that may not be the most efficient from a construction standpoint to have people in the building while they're doing that. So that's, that's on me, but I do believe it is a more efficient process that we have now.
Very good. I just want to see that, I want to see movement there as quickly as possible. Clovis Library, this is a very sore subject for me. Some of the delays have been caused by unforeseen issues with contaminants in soil that have been dealt with. But I do recall last year, about a year ago this time, where I said, you know, we need to be moving at light speed, because those issues had been dealt with. And, um, I know that a, uh, an, a request for information, RFI, was issued on the 18th of April, which is good. It's my understanding that we're planning on issuing an RFP in August of this year. I would like to have a groundbreaking for that library, um, this year. I don't want to wait until next year. So I, for me, the city of Clovis has been waiting for a new library for over 20 years. So that's too long. And that was not caused by current staff members here at all. Actually, when I first got on this board, this board began building the, uh, the revenues needed to create the, the library, the Animal Two Substation and the, or the Area Two Substation and the Animal Shelter. Those were major concerns that we had and, and this board made those a priority. So money has been set aside, uh, but I would like to have a groundbreaking for the Clovis Library this year. I think you can do it, but that's, that's a priority for me.
If you remember, I've been working on this product for 12 years, Supervisor.
That's right. We both did in, we both did in Clovis. And you remember when Laurel made a presentation last time the library tax was reauthorized, that this is going to be the next project? It wasn't the next project. And even prior to that, with the first measure, Clovis is on the list to get the first project. So to me, we need to have credibility as a county. And I've been on both sides of that coin as a council member, mayor of Clovis. You as, uh, you know, director of engineering, you've seen, you know, you've, you've seen some of this too. So Reedley Library as well. I'm glad that we're packaging those together, because I think we're going to get, uh, good, good contractors bidding. Then of course, Ag Commissioners Building, we need to, we need to raise some more money. And so one of the things, if this board is open to it, I think with some of the county facilities out there, there's, uh, private groups that want to help us with the construction of these projects in the sense of donating revenues. And if there's opportunities for naming rights at the, you know, at the new ag building or, or other county facilities we have, and then rooms where people can donate, um, revenues to get some of those naming rights. I think that would help us, um, get more community buy-in, lower the cost of, uh, of those projects for us directly, because now we've got outside entities funding it. So I would like to see the, the county council's office work with the CAO's office to develop a policy quickly, since we've got a lot of projects in the queue and, and maybe a way that we can generate some, some revenues, if, if this board is open to that. And obviously the policy would have to be brought back to us at a later date. So, um, we've got a lot of projects. CSA 34, there's a lot of work out there that needs to be done, you know, millions of dollars of improvements. And then of clo, of course, Clovis Unified School District is working on a, on developing a new campus. And there's a lot of road work that's, that's going to need to be done in coordination with the county. And, and in the other four districts are tons and tons of projects. So between bridge projects, road projects, um, based upon what I know, there's no way that your department can manage all of that effectively, because I'm looking at hundreds of millions. because I'm looking at hundreds of millions of dollars in projects in the next few years that, that need to be done. What I want to see happen is, to the extent that ISD is able to partner with you, if we put out RFPs for outside entities to come in to help manage specific projects here and there, I want to make sure that these projects are delivered efficiently and as quickly as possible, because the longer we delay with some of these, the more expensive these projects get, too. So, that's my tirade.
Like to make a comment.
Sure.
In the last five years, two hundred million dollars worth of product have hit the ground, black-on-ground bridges and the like. We delivered every one of those projects, we're authorized by the board, done. We have a queue of projects right now, probably pushing a half a billion dollars. We're ready, we're able, we're gonna go. We're gonna pull every partner we need into the table, including your office, on the CSA and the issues you just mentioned, and the Bradley Center mission you issued, because you had a conversation with Denver, uh, yesterday, because we're ready. We just need them to perform so we can do our jobs.
And, and I'm not saying, uh, you're not doing your job.
I know that.
I'm saying that I want, uh, to the extent that we're able, that we deploy resources enough to make sure that we keep everything on track, too, um, I don't, I don't want any slippage. But I've said enough, any other comments from board members? All right, and, uh, this is just a receive and file item. I don't believe any action is needed. Is there any additional direction that maybe the CAO's office or ISD is looking for from us that, uh, that we can provide, or do you think enough has been said in regards to this?
I heard a number of requests for, for information that we will return to you to make sure you have all the information, and to your comment about the policy, that we have an existing outdated policy that we can talk to County Council about and return with recommendations to that effect, but there's no further direction that, that we need at this time.
I think that would be good, Mr. Chairman, you brought up a good point. Maybe there is an opportunity for some naming rights or rooms in the building, so maybe County Council can bring that. I am not familiar with what that is. Uh, I knew what it was when we were on the school board, Buddy, we had a certain policy regarding that. So maybe you can refresh us to what our policy is as we move forward.
Have you heard, had anybody approached you for any of that?
Uh, maybe for the ag, there's some interest in the ag.
Yeah. I haven't, I'm just saying, I haven't been approached.
All right, uh, this is just a receive and file item. We thank staff for all the time that they spent putting this together, we appreciate that, and we're ready to move on to the next item.
Item number twelve, Board Supervisor Committee Reports and Comments.
Supervisor Brandal.
Where are we at, Mr. Chairman?
Um, just reports and comments, anything, um, that's going on in the last couple of weeks that you want to report out on, and then we're gonna get to appointments next of, of.
Right on. Nothing really, um, big, but, uh, last Thursday, uh, you and I participated in National Day of Prayer. We started a, a walk at City Hall that ended over here at Court, at the courthouse, and, um, able to pray for branches of our law enforcement and the departments of Fresno County. So, very glad to participate in that again this year.
Supervisor Mendez? Supervisor Quintero?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, uh, this past weekend, there was a fundraiser by Exceptional Parents Unlimited, and, uh, their event was gonna be held over at the Bluffs, uh, which is, it's the, the place that they usually get, but, uh, they anticipated rain, uh, for Saturday, so on Wednesday, they were looking around for a different venue to hold it at. And, uh, they ended up changing it to the, uh, Fresno Fairgrounds. And, uh, they used the agriculture building for their event, and, uh, they were just, uh, raving about the, uh, uh, how easy it was to work with the, uh, with the fair, uh, administration folks and getting that building ready. They, uh, were able to rent it on Wednesday, Saturday was all decorated, ready to go, and they said the, uh, the staff at the, uh, at the Big Fresno Fair just leaned over backwards to make it all happen, and so they were very, very grateful, and they saved a ton of money. So, uh, they were happy with, uh, with that. So just wanted to compliment the, uh, staff at the Big, uh, Fresno Fair. They said the grounds was in great shape, and the county's doing a good job, so, thank you.
Supervisor, all right. I've got a couple of comments, so again, just to echo the National Day of Prayer that, uh, Supervisor Brandal and I got to participate in. I want to let all of you know on the board that, uh, at noon, I participated in another, in another event, and there were numerous churches praying for all of you individually. And, uh, I am one who is, I'm humbled by that and welcome, uh, welcome prayers from, uh, outside groups, because I look at what, what is required for this job, the fact that we have responsibility over a million people here in the county, and, uh, wise discerning leadership is very important. And I hope, for myself, that, uh, um, I approach this job always with a heart of humility, but also, um, one of, of wisdom, godly wisdom, so. Also, too, I wanted to just report out, at the Clovis Rodeo, about two weeks ago, it was a great success. On the final day, on Sunday, the Rodeo Association presented a check, uh, to the Sheriff's Department, I believe for the Area Two Substation, for the, uh, build-out of the memorial that's happening there. I think it was a check for fifty-five thousand dollars, so that was a really big boost. And, uh, the Clovis Rodeo, too, was able to raise money enough for a number of different nonprofit organizations that are doing great, uh, work throughout Fresno County. So, I appreciate, uh, the association very much and their continued commitment to Fresno County. And with that, we'll move on to the next item.
Item number thirteen, Board Appointments.
Supervisor Brandal?
Yes, I'd like to appoint, uh, Brian Whelan to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Supervisor Mendez? Supervisor Quintero?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I've got, uh.
Two appointments, Cheryl Campbell, appointed to the In-Home Supportive Services, and a reappointment of, uh, Soyla Griffith to the Fresno Kings Madera Regional Health Authority.
That's it. Supervisor Pacheco?
Mr. Chairman, I also have an appointment to the Fresno County, Fresno County Planning Commission. I believe it's different than, um, Supervisor Brandal's. Mine is for the Commissioner B position, and again, it's to reappoint James Quest for a term expiring on January third, twenty-twenty-eight.
All right, and to my knowledge, I think all those were vetted, uh, beforehand with Clerk's Office, so we're good to go, those are all separate positions. And for me, I would like to, uh, reappoint Sherry, uh, Walden to the At-Large Plan Participants Position, which expired on May first, twenty-twenty-four, of the Deferred Compensation Management Council. So that sounds fun and exciting.
The appointment, the appointment made by Supervisor Brandal, who he appointed Brian Whelan, replaces Lisa Wolf.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on these appointments? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
We now move to item number fourteen. Public Presentations, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Yep, now's, now's your chance.
Okay, um, I want to start off, uh, a little bit positive. I can be negative, and it's hard being positive all the time, because I have seven kids, and they keep me very negative most of the time. But nevertheless, uh, I want to start off with what's positive. I've had a lot of, um, uh, work that I've been doing with Public Works and Planning, and I have to be perfectly frank, they have been incredibly impressive. Anything I've had to do that's, um, related to traffic maintenance, for example, they've been absolutely stellar, adding signs where they needed to be added. Now, I'm not one of those guys that's continually coming to their offices, showing them where a, um, a pothole is or a missing sign, just some stuff that I'd seen in my general vicinity, that, that of my, my kid's school, and I, I will tell you, they did an amazing job addressing it. Never had to involve my supervisor, they just took the time to hear me out, and I was incredibly impressed with their patience and, and their professionalism. Um, I had some, uh, several courses of business with the Surveyors Office, and they were incredibly impressive as well. And I'll tell you what, the guy I dealt with, I'm gonna try not to go with names today, so I don't embarrass anyone. I swear the guy deserves his own PBS, uh, show. He knows so much history on, uh, property lines and why they're there. I, I was incredibly impressed. The Sheriff's Department has been absolutely great as well. Now, I'm not sure if you know, this isn't rhetorical, because I don't want you guys to take my time. Uh, the, the most, uh, do you know what call comes into the Sheriff's Department most often? It's disturbance, it's, it's someone's playing their, their music too loud. And a sheriff's deputy said that they don't have the funds to purchase something that can read decimal level. So, I went on Amazon and bought one for eleven dollars and thirty-three cents. Because I'm an Amazon Prime member, I got free delivery, and I wanted to donate this to you guys today, okay? Now, I'm being sarcastic, oh, it's yours, do I have it to you, they hand it to you? You don't want it?
You can give it to the clerk, the clerk will get it from you.
You want it, don't you? Now, it's fun to play with as well, okay? Uh, you can talk into it. And I want, that kind of, it's gonna lead into a little bit more about what I got going on. I also wanted to explain that Mr. Roberson from the County Council's office, he's been great. Does that, that guy's name right, Roberson? It's a tough name. I want, I wish it was Roberts, that'd be a lot easier, but he's been absolutely great as well. And I've had an embarrassing amount of run-ins with code enforcement, and I will tell you what, I would honestly say code enforcement's probably one of the most well-run, uh, branches, uh, Public Works I, I have ever seen. They are absolutely amazing. I'm gonna say her name, just because I want you guys to know how amazing she is. Alisaia, did I pronounce that right? Uh, she's absolutely amazing, and I know of one instance where on a Saturday evening, she took off. Now, because I represent a group, do I get a couple extra seconds?
No, but Josh, I will say, uh, I need you to wrap up in twenty seconds.
I can wrap up in twenty seconds. It's the, it's the environmental health, they are an absolute disaster, guys. I, I beg you with all of my heart to look into auditing that division of your government. You will find that you have people that are not working, uh, in the office. They've been told that they can only work from home, they've been told that you guys are saying they can only work from home. It, it is an absolute disaster in there, you will not find someone that can give you answers, you'll wait forever.
And Josh, here's what I would ask, shoot me an email to my office. I think you might live in my district, or if not, it might be Buddy or my district, and what I'll do is I'll, we'll follow up and look into this for you.
I wanted to say something, I want to, it's up to you. I'm begging you to look into it, that you will find there are so many disasters in that organization.
And Josh, we will look into it. A little over, but that's all right, it's good seeing you. Anyone else in the public wishing to comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item.
Public Comment for Closed Session Items fifteen through seventeen point one.
Anyone wishing to comment to this board on our closed session items? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion. Are we able to adjourn, uh, following closed session, or do we need to come back and have, or are we gonna have anything to report out on?
We may need to come back, we may have some announcements out of closed session.
Fair enough, then, we are going to recess and move into closed session, and then we will reconvene when we are, are done in closed session. Thank you all for being here today. And then we will reconvene when we are done in closed session. Thank you all for being here today. (audio cut off)
All right, I'm going to reconvene. We are back from closed session. Dan, do you have anything to report out from closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Under item number 15 in closed session, initiation of litigation, we have two items to report out. By a five to zero vote, the board has authorized litigation against Plus Trans Inc., California Corporation, Mike Bell, Chief Executive Officer, Ashak Wadwa, Nielum Wadwa, Saran Ball, and Manjeet Ball, the property owners of 1270 South Temperance Avenue in Fresno. This is property that's zoned AE20 and is being used in violation of zoning ordinances, nuisance laws, and unfair competition laws as a truck stop. The second item, the board by a five to zero vote has authorized the initiation of litigation against BTL Inc., California Corporation, and Baljeet Singh, the property owner of 1904 North Chateau Fresno Avenue. This property is also zoned AE20 and is being used in violation of zoning ordinances, nuisance laws, and unfair competition laws as a trucking, commercial trucking operation and truck depot.
All right, thank you for that report out. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, it's unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you.